Good morning and welcome to the September 8th, 2021 City Council meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Curtis followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Bow your head. Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the city of Tyler. We thank you for our friends and social bonds that create a healthy and strong Tyler community. We pray for your wisdom and guidance in the decisions that will be made by this council today and in the actions that will be taken by our city staff in the pursuance of those decisions. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start by approving the minutes from July 28th, 2021.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H1.
Mayor Warren and City Council, we appreciate the opportunity for you again as we provide a dedicated summary of plans and services for the coming fiscal year in the form of our proposed $212 million budget for operations and capital improvements. Following this presentation, the City Council will provide opportunities for the general public to speak or to the council for any questions, comments, or concerns they have regarding this proposed budget or the ad valorem tax rate. We are proud of the financial document before you as it details our year ahead and we discuss the accomplishments of the year behind us. During the past year, we improved our community assets such as streets, drainage, parks, and facilities, implemented new technology, moved up maintenance for buildings and replacement of vehicles, and ensured that our public servants have the resources they needed to improve our citizens' quality of life. We are building on that progress in the coming year with a focus on increasing the safety and well-being of our citizens and businesses. The budget we are presenting today is our map for the year ahead. It states our intentions for the next 12 months built on forecasts of what we can expect using the inside of our past experiences. We built the recommendations in this budget from the guiding themes of Tyler First at the larger level of the city's growth and the strategic plan for the next five years. With these two documents as our focus, we then develop a plan of services and operations that move in the direction that these plans coin towards. We don't always know what the immediate future will present or new obstacles will pop up in our path, yet we use our annual budget document to steer us through those challenges to move forward the city of Tyler's vision to be nationally known for our sense of community, commitment to a robust business environment, quality medical care, excellent educational institutions, and the beauty of its public spaces and neighborhoods. We continue to grow our police department to address our community's needs. This includes the two police officers in this fiscal year that were provided through the U.S. Department of Justice's COPS grant. The COPS grant will pay approximately 50% of the two new officer salaries and equipment for the next three years, at which time the city will assume all costs related to the positions. We are requesting the addition of two more officers for the coming fiscal year as we focus on improving investigation response times and how we work with our homeless population. This will provide an authorized strength to the police department of 201 officers if Our family serving your family. This is the motto and continued belief from our fire department to the community they serve. In the case of the Tyler Fire Department family, they are now ranked number one by the ISO for the public protection class. They share this rating with our full city as we are now one out of 393 fire districts in the nation that have achieved this rating, which equates to lower insurance premiums for our citizens and businesses' properties. The ISO study did show that we need to add an additional ladder truck in our fleet due to the growth in our multi-story buildings in Tyler. We are requesting the purchase of a tower truck to address this. Currently, the city has two frontline ladder trucks and one reserve ladder currently unmanned to address these needs. In addition to being able to perform the same duties of a tower truck or a ladder truck, the tower truck includes a bucket or platform that allows for a stable place for victims to stand while being rescued. This additional capability allows for better responses during balcony, mid-rise, and high-rise rescues. While this truck must still go through Design and Apparatus Committee, it is estimated that the tower will extend between 75 to 100 feet and be placed in service in November 2022. Along with the tower truck request, we are requesting the addition of two firefighters in the coming year. The additional staffing is needed to work toward fully manning this engine, along with the continued future additions of staff to address the needs of the next station that will be built in the future. Our plan is to slowly continue to add off firefighters in the decades to come to operate the next fire station when it is built in the next 10 to 15 years. For fiscal year 2022, Stell's tax revenue continues to be the main funding stream for our general fund activities. The general fund contains the services that do not generate their own revenue as our enterprise funds do and includes such functions as police, fire, parks, library, municipal courts, streets, and traffic control. Our projections for property taxes, based on the rate I'll discuss in a minute, are approximately 32% of the general fund budget. An interesting note, the amount of revenue we bring in with our property tax levies, approximately $25.2 million, barely covers the budget for the fire department at $20.4 million. This is why we continue to work on different revenue streams for our general fund services to protect the franchise fees, grants, and other revenue opportunities beyond property We are recommending a property tax rate increase for the coming year to provide for the enhancement of public safety that we have built into this proposed budget. Your current ad valorem property tax rate is $0.25 per $100 valuation, and we're proposing through this budget to adopt a rate of $0.26 per $100 valuation. This property tax rate is the lowest of cities over 15,000 in population in Texas and reflects the values of the blueprint as set out in 1995. The expected amount that it will generate above the existing rate is $1.751 million. And to put it in perspective for our residents, this comes to an increase of $21.74 for property valued at $200,000. The additional funding is targeted towards public safety enhancements as we are budgeting an additional $2.97 million for police and fire staffing, pay, and gear, including the new Tower 10 engine. Our property tax rate is significant as it does not have any debt components associated with it. For each tax rate that is set in the state of Texas, from counties, cities, and school districts, nearly every one of them will have a portion set aside for debt repayment or interest and sinking rates. The city of Tyler has every dollar collected on its property tax levies going straight to our operations for the public. Every penny paid by our citizens is used towards maintenance and operations of city With our agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, on the consent decree in 2016 and commitment to improving our water quality to our customers, we have increased our rates on water and wastewater services for the past five years to pay for the costs involved in operations and capital improvements. We still compare very favorably to the rest of the water wastewater services prices in Texas. Using the Texas Municipal League Annual Utility Cost Survey, we see that our rates are lower on residential water fees and similarly are lower on wastewater rates depending on usage as compared to other cities' utilities rates. For the coming fiscal year, we are not proposing any increases on the base rates for water or wastewater service. Those rates will remain flat per usage for our customers. We do have a $2.21 increase on the regulatory compliance fee, which is directly tied to the debt associated with the EPA consent decree work on the wastewater collection system. In addition to the quality waste collection service provided by the solid waste department, a portion of the residential collection rate goes towards the operations of our code enforcement department and Keep Tyler Beautiful. As illustrated in the chart on the left, we steadily maintain growth in our residential customer base. As the number of customers increase, so do the resources needed to maintain the level of services that our residents know and love. From the drivers who maneuver the vehicles the size of tanks with ever-shifting loads through city streets with the utmost safety, to code enforcement officers helping educate citizens on and resolving city code violations, and the continued work throughout the city performed by Keep Tyler Beautiful that keeps parks, neighborhoods, and streets clean, all these services work together to keep Tyler the natural beauty that is and part of the monthly solid waste fee paid by our customers. As per the budget and tax rate adoption schedule per state statutes, the council is to hold the first of two public hearings on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 and the proposed ad valorem tax rate of $0.26 per $100 valuation. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for your meeting on September 22nd. We also expect to bring the tax rate and budget to the council for adoption at your meeting on September 22nd. I do want to extend my deep appreciation to my budget team of Kedrick Timble, Renissa Wade, and Blake Cathy for their countless hours of taking the budget proposals from each department and working to refine these into the document we have for review today. I also provide gratitude to you, the City Council. You provide direction and priorities in conversations, deliberations, and ideas throughout the year that set the stage for the budget we provided. Our focus on employees, infrastructure, parks, and public safety reflect your vision for this community. I thank you for your service and insight on behalf of the citizens of Tyler. It is a privilege to serve you and present this budget for fiscal year 2022 programs and services for your consideration.
Thanks, Ed. Any comments or questions for City Manager? All right, I'm going to open up a public hearing on this item. I don't have any cards up here. Is there anybody out there that wishes to come up and speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to R1. Morning, Cameron.
Mayor, Council, good morning. Cameron Williams, Traffic Engineer. So this R1 is a resolution that would authorize the City Manager to enter into an advanced funding agreement with TechDOT on some highway safety improvement program projects. And you have probably seen some information about these, so I'm not going to go into detail. Hopefully be back in a couple of weeks with engineering contracts on these. But there are five projects. There are the Gentry Corridor Signal Improvement Projects, the North Broadway and West 26th Crosswalk Enhancements, New Copeland Road Signal Improvement Projects, West MLK Junior Boulevard Signal Crosswalk Improvements, and the South Broadway and Robert E. Lee Signal Improvements. And so with these projects, the city is required to cover 100% of the engineering and any construction cost overruns beyond what has been authorized through these grants that we have received. And so there's kind of two classifications. If it's an on-system project, 90% comes from the federal government on construction and 10% from TechDOT. And then if it's off-system, 90% from the federal government, 10% of the construction cost from the city. And so that's just kind of your breakdown. Here is just a quick summary slide that kind of shows you overall cost. You can see we're estimating the city's portion around $400,000. And I say that's an estimate because we have the engineering and if there's construction costs, overruns that occur. But the TechDOT and the federal amount there is already set through this grant process. And that was what they will participate in. So you can see there's quite a bit of participation from them. So with that, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the resolution authorizing the City Manager as the designated representative for the city of Tyler to execute advanced funding agreements with the Texas Department of Transportation for multiple highway safety improvement program projects.
Thank you, Cameron. Any comments or questions for Cameron? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve R1.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. Paul, M1.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. All right, now that we've got the PowerPoint going, I will continue. Sorry for the delay there. So this agenda item that we are proposing to issue a change order for the contract for the current year's cleaning and CCTV work being done by Cap'n Group. This is their third year of their three-year contract, and this is our fifth year of this work, and we've accelerated the schedule to complete in seven years. Their current pricing is excellent, and so what I want to do and what we're proposing to do is to increase their current contract dollar amount so that we get the additional footage that we need to complete this year. It will be within the, or less than the 25% increase that we're allowed to do, and we'll continue with our excellent pricing that we have. Currently, they are working in the yellow areas of the city and just a little bit of makeup here and there where they've had some issues in the past, but generally that's where they're working. And so just to give you an idea of where they are, they've completed about 72% of our goal for this year, and they've used about 67% of the time. And this proposal will increase their footage by about 100,000, almost 900 feet. So we've got a contract to do 409,000. This will increase it to do about 510,000. So the recommendation is that you authorize the City Manager to execute this change order with Cap'n Group to increase the total contract amount by $185,225.90, a 24.6% increase in the dollar amount for the current cleaning, closed circuit, television work.
Any questions for Paul?
Paul, one question. Is this work that was going to be done next year that has just been moved up to this year because of their fast progress so far?
The, when we rescheduled, we originally planned an eight-year investigation schedule, and we've accelerated it in seven years. So there is some just due to juggling. Some of it was next year's work, some of it might have been the previous year's work. But we're still generally sticking with the priority that was established at the beginning of the consent decree work. And just, so you are in the know, we've got three years to complete the work, so since the consent decree is 10 years, this gives us a full three years to complete that last phase, whereas whatever we do in year eight, we've only got two years to complete the work. So it's to aid in the rehabilitation schedule as well.
Any other questions?
Move to approve, M1.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul. Morning, Tiffany.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone. I am Tiffany Curry in Tyler Water Utilities, and I am presenting Agenda Item M2, which is the 24- to 42-inch sanitary sewer CIPP or cast-in-place pipeliner for the Consent Decree Group 3 work. This is the last of four of the Group 3 projects that I will bring to you all. Last time, we had the large Black Fork Creek Interceptor that was CIPP. This is the second of the cast-in-place pipe liners, which is a range of pipe sizes from 24 inches all the way up to 42 inches. We will be cleaning and installing liner to remediate these, as well as installing manholes, making some manhole repairs, and improving our access at these locations. We received two qualified bids in Situform and SAC in the amounts of $18,632,408, and $0.84 was the low bid, and the SAC bid was just a little bit higher than that, just over $20 million. My request to you today is that the City Council consider authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract in the amount of $18,632,408.84 with Situform Technologies for the 24- to 42-inch sanitary sewer cast-in-place project.
Has this company done work for the city?
No, they have not. Situform is one of the largest CIPP companies in the country, very experienced with this. Our engineer, KSA, is here today, and they evaluated their qualifications packet, so they were required to submit a qualifications packet with their experience in this size CIPP liners, and they evaluated them very closely. They had to be pre-qualified just to submit a bid. So SAC and Situform are the only two that were qualified to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Tiffany?
Second.
$18 million.
Yeah, let Rod record that.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning, Council. Mayor.
Morning.
This is a request that the City Council conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance renewing the designation of the city of Tyler reinvestment zone number three, which is the train facility off of Troop Highway for a period of five years, and the approval of the request from Train Technologies for tax abatement. Per state law, designations of reinvestment zone for industrial tax abatement expires every five years. Since the reinvestment zone was established, Train has granted, has been granted tax abatement for three projects that has resulted in a capital investment of $19.5 million and the creation of 1,070 jobs. Current employment is approximately at 2,000, and taxable value in this reinvestment zone is at $119 million in real and personal property. Train is committed to retaining 400 existing jobs that were housed in Building 9. If you recall, there was a building collapse during the winter storm, and Train plans to reinvest $76.7 million to construct a new building and assembly lines at the facility. In addition to rebuilding Building Number Four, or, in addition to the rebuilding this assembly building, they're planning on rebuilding four assembly lines, and this investment will create three additional assembly lines. On July 30th, 2021, the Tyler Reinvestment Zone Committee recommended the following 10-year tiered tax abatement based on the retention of 400 jobs and the $76.7 million reinvestment. So there's two action items. There's, we are requesting that the Council conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance renewing the designation of the city of Tyler reinvestment zone number three, which is the train facility. And then the second item is to approve the tax abatement agreement with Train Technologies and authorize the City Manager to sign all documents necessary to implement the tax abatement agreement. We do have members from the TEDC here today in support of this item, as well as Ted Crabtree with Train. He is the Vice President of Operations, and I believe he'd like to give you a few words.
Any questions of Heather? So we're doing a public hearing and then going to do the other? Okay, I will open up a public hearing to ask for comments regarding this item. I don't have any cards. So is there anybody out there that wishes to come and speak to this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And before we take action on this, I will just say, thank you, Train, for believing in Tyler and expanding in Tyler, staying in Tyler. You've been a long-term, longtime employer, and we all appreciate your commitment to our city, so thank you.
Mayor, I believe Mr. Crabtree wanted to say a few words.
Okay, yes.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor Warren and City Council, for entertaining this option. So this investment is a generational one for us at Train. It's not the way we wanted to do it, of course, with the building collapse, but what this will do is give us a much, much more efficient operation as we go forward for the next, you know, 20, 30 years. So it takes care of a lot of our internal material flow concerns as well as how we present ourselves as we get it out to the roads. So do appreciate this opportunity, and again, 65 years here in Tyler to go back to the General Electric Day. So we're very proud of that history, and we've got a couple of employees that almost have 60 years of seniority that are still working there. So we're very pleased for y'all to entertain this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, for all of those reasons that we've just heard and more, because it takes good public private partnerships to make any community successful, and this is truly one of those success stories, I move to approve M3.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're down to the board appointments. This gets a little confusing, so we'll try to make this as easy as possible.
Mayor, just a second, if you don't mind. Heather, for, they took the action on, but that included, what was, what was Councilman Westbrook's motion?
To approve in. It was to approve in three. I was watching that.
Okay, so that'll just cover all that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we good?
We are good.
Yeah.
Essentially got a three-point there.
There you go. Thank you.
You're the one who said.
All right, Mrs. Bling.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. This morning, I'm coming to you annually on August 31st, approximately one-half of the terms of the city's advisory board members expire. Some board members are eligible for reappointment. Other members have served a maximum number of years, which is six years, and are ineligible for reappointment, and others do not wish to continue to thereby create a vacancy.
Thank you.
So this morning, I'm coming to you to, we receive applications from volunteers within the city that would like to serve on our boards. So this morning, we're coming, I'm coming to you with Airport Advisory Board. We have four positions that need to be filled. We have numerous applications. And if you would notice that the applicants in red are already on the board and would like to be reappointed. So as we go through this, if you'll see the ones in red, they would like to be reappointed to the board. So how do you want to have it?
So let me ask, is there any councilman that has anyone that they would like to recommend to fill the two spots that we need in addition to the two to be reappointed?
I recommend Jerry Sworzbach.
Are there any other recommendations? I had also heard Lanceford Irisen and Robert Spiley. I'd also heard, does anybody have a preference other than Jerry, whether it's Lanceford or Robert?
Robert is a past member of the Airport Advisory Board, just FYI.
Is he good? Should we put him back on there?
We should move around to others that have not served. I think that's what you're saying.
I was just making, you know, those aware.
That's a good point. So I'm not making the motion, but if we go with, let me say what the motion would be. To reappoint Amir and Robert and include Jerry and Lanceford as the two additional spots. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I second.
A motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, can we reach out to Robert since he did express an interest and see if there's another board that we can put him on?
Sure. I'll send this, we'll need to appoint a chair. At the moment, Robert Campbell is the chair. If you would like to reappoint him, he's willing to serve again.
Any motion for that?
Yes, sir.
I move that we appoint Robert Campbell as the chair.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have the Board of Adjustment, which is the zoning board of adjustments. We have, we need three positions still. We received one application from Michael Donley that would like to be reappointed. And keep in mind, the ones that we do not have enough applications for, I will go back out and put it in the I will go back out and put it in the paper and ask for more applications. And also, if Council would like to reach out to citizens to maybe fill an application, that would be great.
So Cassandra, Michael is his first choice. And then Jimmy Reed, his first choice is P&amp;Z, and Lawrence Levin had a first choice, which can also be filled.
But about Jimmy Reed, he's a reappointment on the P&amp;Z, so he wants to come back on that board. And also Lawrence Levin, that's his first choice, but he's not on a board at the moment.
But his first choice was something else.
Was P&amp;Z. But all those members on that board would like to come back.
So you have four spots on P&amp;Z and all four want to be reappointed.
Say it again.
You have four spots on P&amp;Z, and all four of those are eligible for reappointment.
Okay. So the motion would be to have Michael Donnelly come back and also to fill another spot with Lawrence Levin? Is that correct?
If that's as you're deciding.
You may want on... there are a few boards that... particularly Board of Adjustment and Planning and Zoning Commission that have a legal perspective to them. The Civil Service Commission also has that. And so you may want to make sure that typically for Board of Adjustment, as the example, past Planning and Zoning Commission members, City Council members go on that because they have experience in land planning decisions and thus come for Board of Adjustments, which ultimately is an appeals board that has a legal component to it. Ultimately, you know, there's only a few boards that will get you sued. In essence, is what it comes down to. P&amp;Z and Board of Adjustments are two of them. And so you want to make sure that you vet it out possibly your candidates for those positions in order to make sure that you are putting people in place that will serve you well and reduce litigation opportunities.
Okay.
So what are you saying?
So...
I ask that because I just asked, is anyone know Lawrence Levin? And I don't know if anybody...
Yeah, I don't know.
He may be perfect for it, he may not.
And possibly, maybe we don't want people as their second choice.
Cassandra, has... can Lawrence's application be vetted and then...
And I'm going through the Board of Adjustments liaison here for you.
Cassandra is the three, so would we need... if those two serve, would we need one more or...
Yes.
Okay.
So is someone going to...
So you just want to just reappoint the member, Michael Donnelly, and then we'll come back and bring you more applications or bring that person back at the next meeting if they should?
Perfect. If someone can make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, three positions need to be filled. Three applicants would like to be reappointed.
Move to approve.
Motion by Wynn, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That one was easy.
Historical Preservation Board, we have four positions need to be filled. One would like to be reappointed, and we have a one applicant. Also is Connor.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on Historic Preservation Board for those two folks?
So moved.
You want to say which two folks?
Michael Hurley and Connor. You gonna make...
Yeah. Go on, do your best.
Heterics.
Good job. All right, we got a motion.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion? I need a second.
Second.
A motion by McGee, second by Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Cassandra, you skipped over Disability Issue Review Board.
I did not receive any applicants on that, so I will bring it back next time. Industrial Development Corporation Board, four positions to fill, two applicants would like to be reappointed, and then also will come back next time with more applications.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Joanne and Claude Henry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Keep Tyler Beautiful Board, eight positions, numerous applications. And we have Lisa Williams, Jesse Crowder, and Christina that would like to be reappointed.
Looks like you have eight applicants with their first choice for this board. Move to approve the applicants, all for the first choice that have chosen Keep Tyler Beautiful Board as their first choice. Lisa Williams, Jesse Crowder, Christina Sue Reveal, Victor Vaillée, Shasun Houston, Sandra Newton, Lekeilia Hill, and Frank Vargas.
So moved. Excuse me, second?
Go ahead.
Second to him.
Okay. A motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have Library Board, three... I mean, five applicants to fill, five applicants, two would like to be reappointed. I will go back to Main Street.
Move to approve the Library Board with the five names that are listed. Sheila Austin, Melissa O'Neil, Diana Chambless, Kristen Thompson, and Tammy Brooks.
Second. A motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. I will have to say we have one of the applicants here. Glad you're here. I think you're about to get approved. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And also a chair. I'm sorry, I guess we should do it all at once.
Who's the current chair?
They would like to see Sheila Austin.
Move to approve Sheila Austin as Library Board Chair.
Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Main Street Board, we have seven positions to fill. We have seven applicants. Caitlin Porterfield and Casey Hollinshead is Heart of Tyler. And the other five are reappointments.
Do you need a chair? Or you got one?
No, sir. Appoint a chair.
So there's seven spots and seven people, right?
Move to approve the seven applicants for the Main Street Board. Latonya Young, William Charles, Stan Anderson, Chad Humphries, Marty Crawford, Caitlin Porterfield, and Casey Hollinshead.
Second. A motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Neighborhood Violation Board, we have two positions to fill, two applicants. Vicki Jackson would like to be reappointed.
And then we've got Larry Kellum that wants to be on this board?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve Vicki Jackson and Larry Kellum.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Northeast Texas Public Health District, the city has two positions... I'm sorry, the Health Department has two positions on this board, and one is for Kimberly Ashley that would like to be reappointed.
Move to approve Kimberly Ashley for the Northeast Texas Public Health District Board.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Parks Board, we have five positions to fill. We have four applicants that would like to be reappointed and four additional to choose from for one position.
So we got four folks that are coming back. Who's the current chair or who?
Well, we have to appoint a chair, and they're asking Jim...
Jim Cousineau.
Yes.
Jim Cousineau? So we got four there to be reappointed, so we need one more from the additional folks that are on that list. Anybody have a recommendation for that?
Jennifer Miles. I move to add Jennifer Miles to this group.
All right, so we've got a motion to reappoint Paul, Justin, Justin, Jim, and Jennifer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did we... we didn't appoint the chair in that motion, did we? Or did we?
The chair is Jim. She is the chair.
Do we need to appoint him?
Yes, sir.
So you...
Move to approve Jim Christenek as the chair.
Second.
A motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Planning and Zoning Commission, four positions to fill. We have four applicants that would like to return. Pamela Felix, Lloyd Nichols, Jimmy Reed, and Blair Swain.
So moved.
Second. Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Traffic Safety Board, we have four positions to fill and two applicants that would like to return.
I'll entertain a motion for... to reappoint Mina Solomon and John Matthews.
So moved.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And just so that we're on the same track with Habsburg Sales Tax Board, I just wanted to go back and ask District Three, District One, and District Five their reappointments. I know we had John Walton Jr. that wanted to stay on the board. I know Mr. Smith was appointed in District One. I also want to mention District Five, Aubrey Sharp. Are we still okay with those names?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Dr. Aubrey Sharp and John Walton Jr. to the Habsburg Sales Tax Board.
All right, we've got a motion for John Walton and Aubrey Sharp.
Second.
Got a second from McKeller. Motion by Westbrook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And just so the public are aware, we will come back and ask for applications for the Animal Care Advisory Board, Board of Adjustments, Disabilities Issues Review Board, Historical Preservation Board, Industrial Development Corporation, and the Traffic Safety Board. If you need an application, you can go to cityclerk@... or send an email to cityclerk@TylerTexas.com, and I can email back or just however you want me to send it to you. Or you can go to CityofTyler.org website and fill out an application there.
Ms. Cassandra, could you please go back to that list so that I can get a picture of it? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
And Cassandra, do you go back and those applicants that may have not selected a second choice, go back and let them know that these boards are... have spots available? Try to reach back out for those that went so far as to turn in an application.
Yes, sir, I can do that. Usually I just... if Council... I'll keep them on file for a year, but I can go back and see if they would like to reapply for another position.
Cassandra, I would also like to plug the app because they can also go on the app and click...
You can fill it out there? On my app?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Cassandra? Great job. Thank you, Cassandra.
Thank you, Cassandra.
All right. Now we are going to move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers reported.
Yes, Mayor. Just a few items of note, just to kind of... on the Rose Garden complex update, Harvey Hall has been demolished and is no longer there. And one of the other parts of that, this was a six-inch water line that we repaired and tied back and now create a loop system over there for... on that complex, which will be useful for not only the complex itself, but also for the neighborhood. Road construction considers to be a priority as we remove the debris from Harvey because with the road and then the parking lot, that'd be in front of the Rose Center itself and the theater are some of the first parks that are to be built and completed. And we're hoping that will be done by kind of late fall. And then we're also then, once all the debris is cleared, we'll also then prepare the conference center pad site. You'll see that work going on. And then selective demolition will occur at the Mayfair Building as we create a final set of plans for its restoration. We won't touch that until after the fair, but once the fair is done, we're going to start to go in there and try to start doing the rework on that. But we're also, because of its historic nature, we're going to try to minimize the amount of demo work that we're going to be doing there with that facility. As COVID is continuing to kind of... you see as far as its impact in our community, I want to kind of make a note of one of our departments and some of the efforts that they're making. The Library Department has been very versed in trying to work through COVID as we've gone through this past year during this pandemic and working with other libraries to assist them on what were different programmings and ways that we can be able to protect ourselves and our citizens. And so with that, they're closely monitoring the COVID cases as vaccination rates in the community to ensure the safety and security of their citizens and employees alike. They're continuing to work as with some... as far as in-person programming, encouraging the use of masks and limited participation. One of the examples of this is the teen lock-in scheduled for later this month. And so they've capped registration to 25 teens, but they've also provided a lot of take-home kits that have been proven very popular for children and adults alike over the past year. And then finally, this past Saturday at Bergfield Park, the East Texas Symphony Orchestra performed a concert in the park we haven't had. And we tried to figure out, I think 2013 was one of the last dates that we had seen for it, but even then, people were trying to remember when... what was that like in 2013? And... but it turned out very well. We are very proud of it. And I wanted to share the note that the Council received back from Robin Hampton, who's Executive Director of the East Texas Symphony Orchestra. And some of the parts of the note are, "It was well-received by the community, and definitely many are asking that we do more events at Bergfield Park. ETSO is appreciative of all of the city, did in helping with preparation leading up to and the day of the event. Many people have said how wonderful it was to see the community's support evident with the City of Tyler there to help. It was an event that took much planning with many hours of preparation from each of you, ETSO's stage crew, staff, and the musicians. Thank you again for your contribution. The City of Tyler is definitely fortunate to have Bergfield Park and leadership in place that provides amazing opportunities for all to enjoy." And so with that, I wanted to just kind of... not only was it a great event, but it was definitely made an impact with many in our community. So back to you, Mayor.
And I'll echo on that, that there were several council people there, and it was a fabulous event. And I think if, from what I gathered, the last time ETSO was there, it might have been as far back as 2003, is what I'd heard.
Ah, that might have been it, yeah, because we couldn't find 2013.
2003. So it's been a long time, but I will say this. The performance by the orchestra in that new amphitheater, the sound was perfect. Looking out at the crowd and seeing the families and dogs and wagons with cheese trays and everything that you... that's why we did it. And so I just thank everybody on Council that approved doing the amphitheater, and it was just truly a success. So thank y'all for that. Any other comments for...
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, on that, I didn't receive any phone calls for noise and traffic concerns that you... sometimes I do get when we have events in the park. So I think everybody in District Four was appreciative of having the city into our neighborhood.
Well, it's hard to complain when you listen to Lomens. So... And on a side note, before we adjourn, my father-in-law, who's watching this on Channel Three, is in ICU at Christmas. Get better, okay? Praying for you. I want to plant a motion to adjourn.
I have a comment before you, if you don't mind. I know that, Mr. Mayor and Council, that this... we will not be in session before this Saturday, the 11th, which is 9/11, as everyone knows. And so I just wanted to say from this Council that all of those who served during that time, to include myself, that we want to thank them for the struggles. So many here in Tyler served in this war for the last 20 years. So I want to thank them for the service that they've given to this country. And for those even maybe in this audience, I say thank you for the service.
Well, thank you for that comment. Any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. We are adjourned.